It's free refill on the large bucket. And if you, and they don't tear it off, I mean, you gotta use it.
You don't take it. Oh, you're working like this.
Thanks, Greg. And we're, we're, it's mine! They didn't, I didn't use the second refill!
Putting in that.
We call the Metropolis City Council's order Monday, November the twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen. Call the roll, please.
Barfield, Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Maguire.
Here.
McManus. Mydell.
Here.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing prepared. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear Heavenly Father, we come tonight thanking you for each and everything that you do for each one of us. Be with this council, dear Heavenly Father, that each and every decision we make here will be for the betterment of the community. Be with our nation, dear Heavenly Father, be with our armed service personnel, night on foreign grounds. Here in the United States, guide and break their lives, bring them safe and home to their families. Be with the ones in the community, dear Heavenly Father, that have lost loved ones this past week. Be with the sick, be with the caregivers. We ask in that precious name, amen. We need a motion to approve minutes of the eleven twenty-eight sixteen. Looked by Mr. Hall. Second by Mr. McManus.
I'll be saying that next.
Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Maguire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mydell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
First item on the agenda, citizen's request. Having none, will the first items on the mayor's report will be on the amended agenda to adopt the resolution concerning to assessment of collection agreement.
Consigned.
Consigned, yeah, consigned. And I believe everybody had a copy of it in the amended agenda. If not, does anybody need to run there? And the motion to adopt. Moved by Mr. McManus. Second by Mr. Hall. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Maguire.
Yes.
McManus. Mydell.
No.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, we need a motion to adopt resolution consenting to assignment of transfer station agreement. By Mr. Hall. Second.
I'll second.
Who you wanna give it to? Mr. Barfield.
It changed a little.
Rick did change that a little bit, I guess, today. Would you have a change?
It did, the, uh, the investors actually, um, are borrowing some of their money that they're putting into the new company and all. And so, one of the things that their bank, um, or their lender, uh, wanted was, uh, that they could assign their contract, uh... There's two kinds of assignment, there's an assignment for operational purposes, you assign it from one company that's gonna operate, fulfill the contract. There's an assignment of a contract, kinda like an assignment of a leasehold interest or something, which operates as, uh, part of the collateral. In other words, Bulldog Systems operates transfer station, they make money, that, that cash flow we give us what's assigned to their bank. So, uh, the investment company came through this afternoon and said they needed that in there. It doesn't affect our rights in any way, it's just they're pledging whatever money they make off of it, they're pledging their money to pay back their loans, is what it boils down to. So, uh, in those names that you see in there, that, uh, Ironwood Mezzanine and Ironwood Mezzanine two and three, those are private equity funds that are financing this for the guy that came here from Pittsburgh, is what it is. So, uh, that's, that's what that boils down to. It doesn't change anything, they're all still the same, terms of the contract are still the same, duration of the contract's still the same, all that stuff stays the same from our state.
So, we do have a motion by Mr. Hall, we do have a second by Mr. Barfield. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Maguire. McManus. Mydell.
No.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
We do have Mr. Hanson here, Dan, you wanna say anything?
No, I, um, actually, the, oh, I'm sorry. The, um, you know, the company that is coming to, to invest in our company, um, is gonna bring a lot of expertise, allow us to grow, uh, more than we have with the financial means that we have from our cash flow. Um, we've already, um, we've already tied up six newer trucks in what we have. So, along with, um, some of the expertise, they're also gonna allow us to have the capital to, to grow the company more than we have over the, over the last eight or nine years that I've been here. Um, I'm still gonna be the contact person, I'm still gonna be the manager, and actually, as you'll see on there, I get a little piece of the pie this time. So, I'm gonna have some equity in the company. So, that, uh, for after ten years of, of my time, I'm, uh, I get, I get to be a voice in the, in the whole thing, other than the manager. So, and I appreciate you guys allowing us to do that, being the, the largest, uh, the largest city contract we have, and then when you tie the transfer station in, it's, it's a lot of revenue that, that we generate from the city of Metropolis, and we appreciate it.
One thing I might mention, uh, just a bit of background on the gentleman that was here and his company, uh, he's done this multiple times over. And typically, as he told us, he's in the process of putting together anywhere from five to seven of these entities, which he'll operate, uh, independently, is for about five years. Then what he typically does is he packages all this and he takes it public, and it becomes a public company, kinda like Republic or others. It puts a lot of capital into a company. From our standpoint, it, it makes it a long-term, solid future, if, if we, if we go that route, it also make, it also means we deal with a company that is very competitive and can afford to be very competitive down the road somewhere when we look at this again. So, uh, uh, we, we, as Dan says, they put a lot of money into this, they put a lot of equipment into this, we keep state-of-the-art equipment. And, um, again, we have, there's a big company down the road that basically keeps us very competitive, uh, so... That's all of it.
Not a win-win situation?
Yeah, still, I think it can be a very good opportunity for us.
Good.
It will be them, it will give them the opportunity to be more competitive than the company they've ever been, so... Um, that's a good thing for us, it just drives the cost down on our customers a little bit, that's what we're looking for, so... Next item is, uh, is strictly an update on the acknowledgement of a resignation of Mr. Ed Bridges from the Metropolis Public Library. Uh, Ed has been a very, very, uh, uh, integral part of the growth of the hos- of the, uh, library. He's, uh, he's, he's been a face, uh, that has actually grown, uh, with the, uh, early library, the remodeling, to the where we at today. And, uh, so what we will do now is just acknowledge, uh... Ed's present on our, uh, library board for, you know, almost forty years, that's a long time. And, uh, what we will wait now for a, uh, what we allow, uh, the board to do is they'll actually, um, bring forth, um, they'll call me probably and, uh, bring two or three names, and we'll sit down and talk about it. Uh, I believe it functions, uh, well down there to let them, uh, bring something back to us, we'll discuss it. And then, uh, approve a recommendation from their board, uh, and we'll move forward from that. But, anyway, it, uh, Ed is, like I said, we'll miss Ed, Ed's done a good job down there. Next item is, we're just gonna try to keep you updated as we go along, council meeting and council meetings, so just keep it in your mind. And we will be bringing, uh, we actually did get two companies, I think one is, uh, from the preliminary talks that we've had with them, I believe one is a little better. Uh, not much different cost-wise and stuff, but there is a little bit of difference of what each company brings for the recycling program on that. So, uh, we're gonna wait till after Christmas, someplace in January probably, uh, give everybody a chance to get their new televisions, their new, um, computers and, uh, whatever they get electronic and, uh, work out a system here. This, this company do, does have a recycling thing, they, they classify it as any electronics with a tail, which is a plug-in. Uh, I told them we don't have to worry about the white goods too much, uh, we actually can set them to the curb and it won't be but about, uh, three and a half minutes till that'll be gone. So, but we do have a problem with the electronics. Uh, on our side, we, our computers are, uh, we're gonna update ours, we're gonna start that in January. We certainly wanna make sure that we have the opportunity to get rid of everything we've got. The county, uh, by being here in the city, we're gonna give them the op- it won't be for county residents, uh, at this time, uh, unless something changes. But we will, uh, give the county, uh, government the opportunity to, uh, actually do away with theirs.
Another thing too, Mr. Mayor, is that we might think about even waiting, if we're gonna wait till the first year, to even wait till after Super Bowl, so... Cause that's week is the biggest week for TV sales.
And we certainly wanna wait long enough to get with what's sitting around and what the news is, so that'll be fine.
I mean, I just read you that thing.
I wouldn't be buying a new television personally once you're Super Bowl, but anyways, I guess there are people who do, so that's a good thing. Next item. Oh, in, still under the mayor's report, we probably will possibly need a, uh... Waterline Street and a, uh, finance on our tax levy. Uh, probably maybe December the seventh, which is on Wednesday. So, we'll, we may be having that, just we'll just have to wait and see what it is, but I do know we need one for the tax levy. And, uh, it is time for our, uh, David Andreas probably will wanna come. Uh, we do have one year left on our, uh, contract with our company, so we will have, uh, he may wanna come down and tell us where we're standing for the next year on our contract and where it's at there. So, anyway, that, uh, will probably be December the seventh. And after, uh, I think, uh, one amongst us is going into the, uh, big realm of retirement and things, I think, uh, Mr. Hall, I think, has got one more working day with his company and then, he's just gonna be at our leisure, guys, so we can just beat up on him just pretty good and stuff like that. And, uh, it, uh, just for the...
More cheap, too.
Yeah. The, uh...
He can caulk too, brother. Yeah, I know how to use a caulking gun, too.
You know, I do wanna put a thank you out, uh, uh, we mentioned just briefly the other day, but, uh... The sewer separation has been, uh, as you know, down on the lower part of, uh, Broadway, and I do wanna personally thank Mr., uh, Short. He has, uh, spent several altogether, several hours down there. His expertise in the east end, which he, uh, or the west end, he's lived down there biggest part of his life, has been very beneficial to Mr., uh, Bill down there of locating this. Uh, some things are on maps, now they are on maps, but there was several down there that the only way you, uh, you pretty well knew. And Chuck was very helpful to Bill down there on, uh, you know, locating some old water lines, some sewer lines, and, uh, we do wanna thank Chuck for that, so... Next item, corporate counsel report, Mr. Aigle, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first thing I wanted to note, cause my wife told me to, uh, and I always do what she says first. Uh, community center, we got some rain, it did not leak, so roof, roof did well, okay? Uh, it's the first test. Um, the, uh, another thing, I, I put on there, I'm seeing on Fair Labor Standards Act court decision, uh, I know what was last year, I've kinda probably, uh, hounded this point of this... There were some changes coming in the Fair Labor Standards Act regulations that the Department of Labor puts out and then enforces. And, um, these have to do with the overtime rules and who's qualified to receive overtime. And, uh, there, there is traditionally been a three-part test, and, uh, the, uh, the first part is the, uh, the dollar amount of the salary. The second is the salary basis that person's paid, the third is, uh, do they fall into one of three categories, uh, executive, administrative, or professional? Or, and there's a computer, uh, category too, also. Um, and, uh, what has changed, uh, at least according to what was supposed to have changed, was, uh, this initial test. And you, by the way, you have to meet all three tests, you meet the salary, you meet salary basis, and you meet the classification of your job, and that's based on job description and job duties. Uh, if you meet all three, you're exempt, in other words, you don't qualify for overtime. If you don't meet one, any one of those, then you qualify for overtime. And purpose of the regulation was to raise the very first test, which since two thousand and four had been like twenty-three thousand dollars. And regulation proposed that we'd raise it to forty-seven thousand, four hundred and some change. And, uh, as you may have heard, uh, that regulation was set going to effect December first. And i- in a number of employers, it was gonna affect, uh, even governmental employers, it's gonna affect people that have been classified as managers, if you will. Um, because, uh, they wouldn't meet the first test. And so, uh, in many cases, the, the difference between what they make now and what that forty-seven thousand would've been, it's too much to justify bumping up that you just simply have, you have to work with them about maybe, there's a, you can go to hourly, you can remain salary but still be non-exempt, so you have to have an hourly rate calculated and have an overtime provision. They have to do time cards or punch clocks or things like that, and it was, you know... Oddly enough, I had a, uh, a couple of other clients that wrote this up to me as well, said that they had more people affected potentially by it, and it was definitely gonna have a, have an effect on morale because people that are used to not punching a time clock don't wanna punch a time clock, they consider themselves management, they don't wanna do that. Well, in any event, it was a challenge filed to the regulation, uh, in the court, in the district court, U.S. District Court in Texas. And the court last week granted a preliminary injunction against this regulation, finding that the regulation was, uh, exceeded the authority of the Department of Labor. Uh, the court found essentially that this increase that went from twenty-three to forty-seven should've actually been adopted by Congress and was not within the authority of the Department of Labor to impose that. So, um, for now, at least, uh, this regulation, you might say, is state, nobody's going to jump up and say, oh, can you have to do this immediately? There are a number of alternatives, since it was injunctive relief, Department of Labor or any of the states that were made parties could appeal, okay? And they have a certain period of time to appeal. They could file a motion for reconsideration, um, and then appeal. Uh, or they could take it back, go back to the drawing board, potentially, uh, uh, either ask Congress for relief, or they could go back to the drawing board, try to draft an amendment that, uh, would meet what the court said. Um, for us, in looking at this, we had potentially, uh, a couple of positions that were affected. And, uh, uh, but also in looking at it, one of the things that I had to do was also look at some of our salary people that were gonna be above the threshold. Cause our, and actually ran into this with another client, too, that's people that are above, but they might not meet the duties test out here, okay? And we said, well, is that significant? Yes, it is, because if you don't meet all three tests, then you're not exempt and you are subject to the overtime rules. Um, I don't profess to be an H.R. specialist by any means, although I've done a lot of it to let, but I usually handle it on a case-by-case from a legal standpoint basis. Uh, what I had, uh, suggested to the mayor, what we were planning to implement, I think we should do anyway, uh, there's a, uh... There's a lady that works here in town, it's at the hospital, she works for them, uh, she has a bachelor's and a master's and all this stuff, and she's done H.R. for years. Uh, John Douglas is her name, and I was, and I talked to her and said, would you on the side be willing to look at a few of our positions, just to make sure we got them, in your opinion, classified? Give the city council and the mayor some advice. I said, better than my, I mean, I, I can give you legal advice, but one of these positions involves personal rec, and I'd rather not be the one that says one way or the other. There may be some exemptions that apply, and I've asked her to look at it, and so, even though the reg itself is kinda on hold for now, we don't know where that's gonna go, I still think it's, it's a good idea that we look at the duties test and make sure that the people we've got classified now as exempt really are exempt. Because even though they may be above that threshold, I can think of at least one, and there may be two positions or more, that won't meet the duties test, okay? In which case, then we gotta decide, uh, going forward, how do we deal with their hours and how do we deal with that, that position? Uh, so, uh, I, we're not, we're not, we're not under a time crunch right now, but I, like I say, I'm probably gonna have John come in, look at those positions. What she did out there was, she actually interviewed people and then did some research on those positions and took that information and sort of compiled her list of what she thought, who met the duties or who didn't meet the duties. Cause they had, they had some that were, uh, above the threshold, but it was questionable whether or not they got the duties. Uh, and they would've been above the threshold even at a higher rate. So, uh, she's, she's, uh, she's got a pretty good background in this, she's done it before. Most people that have been in H.R. for any length of time, that's one of the big jobs they all do, I, I've worked with others before, and they try to make sure that you got everybody classified correct. And the, and you might say, well, why is that important if we haven't done it before now? Well, regardless, with all the focus on this regulation, uh, everything, and I've been to a couple of classes and I've done a couple, I've taken a lot. There's gonna be an increased, uh, enforcement activity, you're gonna see Department of Labor looking at, doing, conducting wage and hour audits. And, uh, so, uh, we need to be prepared for that. And we don't, we don't really have an H.R. function here, and so we need, we need a little assistance to make sure we're on, if we wouldn't get a wage and hour audit, because it won't just focus on one person, it'll go across the board, uh, if that would happen. So, uh, we wanna be, have it documented, how we got people classified, why, and then that, that will only sustain, uh, any audit that we might get.
So, we will be doing that, you know, just to find out where we're at.
Is, uh, does that, uh, ent- entail any, uh, money being paid this person for consulting fees?
Probably will be a small, a minimal.
Or, I would expect way less than we even want the mayor spending, though, because I'm, I'm...
There ain't no problem.
We don't, yeah, we don't need to, it won't, it won't get any close, any place close to what we can do.
We're, yeah, it would, uh, I just think it'd be beneficial to have somebody that knows a little, but, and practices it daily.
Right.
To do that.
At least we'll know when, if it comes time, we'll know what we got there.
We know where we're staying.
We will know where we're standing, changes we may need to make going forward. Uh, cause if we have any that are, even though they're over, don't meet the test, we need to go ahead and get them changed now.
Even when it won't be in staying at that, it would be better if we, we be, uh, ahead of, ahead of the law, instead of trying to scramble or catch up with it, yeah.
Even that first duty of the, the salary part, that's on a sliding scale, next year, that might've went up to fifty thousand, that's not guaranteed to stay there. It's on a re- recurring scale every year.
That's, if it winds up ever getting sustained, that is the plan, is they wanna put it on a slide scale where it goes up on a regular basis without any further intervention. So, you're gonna have to track it going forward. Um, the, uh, the, it's just one of those things that, uh, that we need to get done. But like I say, for now, at least we're not in an emergency-type basis to look at this, we do have a little time, and we'll be talking about it.
We'll keep you informed, Mr. Aigle, we'll move along with that. Anything else for the good of the cause, Mr. Aigle?
I don't think so.
Committee reports, Waterline Street, Mr. Barfield, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The Waterline Street committee held a meeting on November sixteenth. Now that, we had, uh, three items being put on the board, and we, uh, thoroughly discussed these and approved these. I'll make a motion on the following. I'll make a motion to accept proceeding with the painting Sidewalks on Market Street at the uptown area.
I'll second that.
In speaking to that, I did talk to, uh... Johnny today, and, uh, he is, uh, he worked on sidewalks today, I told him, I said, well, it'll be a little cheaper today, cause you didn't have to use as much water today. But he did work, he did work on some of the sidewalks, he's got part of the, uh, the Happy Hearts building painted, he's gonna finish it up. Uh, he may not get it finished tomorrow, he's had to do some changes of some windows and some caulking and, uh, some mortar work tomorrow. Uh, possibly will finish that up the day after. And you've already approved that one, and the reason I put this on there, uh, for the sidewalks, is when he, we'll cut the check, then I'll have a little to cut the check. We will put the check in the vault, and the check will not be released until all the sidewalks are done. That way, if he, if he gets, gets it done in the middle of the week or whatever, he won't have to work for his, wait for his money. But he is actually going to paint a small section in front of Happy Hearts, make sure that it looks, uh, right. That building there is going to be a neutral color, uh, kinda the color across the street, that way we'll be able to tell if it's what we really want, so, uh...
Excellent.
I appreciate that. So, we do have a motion, we do have a second, call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Maguire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mydell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to suspend the rules and place an ordinance approving the cash farm lease of property upon its passage.
We do have a motion, we do have a second by Mr. Short.
It's gonna be two oh one six twenty-five.
Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Maguire.
Yes.
McManus. Mydell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to adopt an ordinance approving the cash farm lease of property two thousand sixteen twenty-six. Twenty-five, I'm sorry.
Second by Mr. Short. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Maguire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mydell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor completes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Barfield.
Thank you.
Next item, Park and Recreation, Mr. Taylor, sir.
Sir, Mayor, uh, we have, we discussed, uh, hiring the Spirit Corporation to replace the filter media in the filter, and they gave us a price of twelve thousand six hundred, but I was noticing in this letter, do we need to incorporate in the motion about the filter lateral inspection being, you know, the cost if there needs to be repairs would be on top of that? And also, do we have a place to, for them to dump the sand?
Yes, we're gonna, we, we, we're gonna take care of that.
Okay.
Uh, and that, uh, I think the cost of removing that sand was like eight hundred and sixty dollars, or, but I, I told, uh, we'll take care of that.
Okay, or is it, so, on the... So, do we, we also wanted to incorporate it into the motion, uh, that if they find...
The associated cost.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, uh, this is, this is for the pool and the water filtration system, or they call it the filter media. And I make a motion to accept hiring the Spirit Corporation to replace the filter media in the filter system, city pool, in the amount of twelve, twelve thousand six hundred dollars. And also to approve any necessary repairs that they may find.
I'll second that.
Most of the times, Spears, through the years, has been very, 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 uh, cooperative with anything that he's been doing. Many times, if it takes a part, a piece, whatever, uh, they will actually allow our men to actually, if it's, if we're capable of replacing that, and, and, of course, we'll have to buy the, the material and stuff like that, so, uh, there shouldn't be much associated with that, unless there can be something major. If it is, uh, I certainly, before I do anything, will call, let you know. So, we do have a motion, we do have a second, call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Maguire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mydell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item. Industrial Committee, Mr. McManus, sir. We, we had one thing come out of the industrial committee meeting the other day, and it was, uh, I make a motion to accept proceeding with Max Rosso at the industrial park. We decided that would be a benefit to the... We decided that would be a benefit to the city, him, and the county.
I'll say it.
We do have a motion by Mr. McManus, we do have a second by Mr. Barfield, call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus. Mizell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, and we did, uh, we had one other item in that industrial committee on, uh, on a project, uh, uptown. I, I have not heard anything, uh, from that, so we'll just, uh, wait until we do get some kind of a confirmation back from the individual. If not, we will be bringing it back, uh, to move forward with something else, so. Next item, ordinance committee, Mr. Short, sir.
First two items already had a first reading. I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance authorizing the lease of properties acquired with the fee of money.
Second. Second, now, Mr. Canada. We do have a motion, we do have a second discussion. And I will say that we will have more when the, it gets out, but we do have, uh, probably at least, uh, six individuals that actually adjoin the, the properties that are interested in leasing that piece of property for, uh, at least we won't have to be taking care of it anymore.
Right.
So we do have a motion, we do have a second, call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is to adopt an ordinance amending the sick leave benefit policy of the City of Metropolis, and I make that a motion.
Second.
We do have a motion by Mr. Short, we do have a second by Mr. Barfield. If there's no discussion, call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the last item is just a first reading, I think we all have it in our packets, on an ordinance adopted Medicare Part B, premium cost reimbursement policy. Includes more reports.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Department heads, Chief Massey. And Chief Morris.
All good, sir.
Nothing at this time.
This time? This time.
Quiet, very quiet.
Dodged a bullet with Frank down there, he has nothing on his head.
He said at this time, he's, he's plodding.
He's got notes on pump.
Spex. Old business. New business. Miscellaneous reports. Financial repair. Need a motion for payment of salaries, payroll, and contract bills. Motion by Mr. Hall, second by Mr. McManus. Call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, payment of miscellaneous bills.
I'll make a motion, I'll say it.
Motion by Mr. Hall, second by Mr. McManus. Call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
We did spend the, uh, morning, this morning, with the streets we were pulling, we went down, uh, all of Metropolis Street, all of Market, Lower Ferry, Upper Ferry, making sure that all our drains were open and, uh, with all the leaves that's fallen, it hadn't rained in what, a month, month and a half? And as far as I know, we did not have any drainage issues whatsoever, so, uh, of course, a certain amount of that, I'm sure, went into the ground, but there wasn't much went into the asphalt, so that's a good thing. Anything else for the good of the cause? Is there really, you have anything for the good of the cause?
All right.
Reminders. Those reminders are, have already gone, gone away, so, uh, I think the only thing, we do have a, uh, December the third is the Christmas parade, December the third is the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast, and December the tenth is the community center holiday market bazaar. Do you motion to adjourn? Thank you all for your time. Call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.